Get it better on my phone to be honest. Because it doesn't almost take my password. Now this one does, but the other one won't. No? Rusty? She's good. She's, you know?
I don't officially start until July, so that's why.
That was sixty-five?
Grace period.
Can't actually use that.
Connie said she had forty-four.
The name sounds familiar. It's like fifteen, three years. Oh, I remember that. Oh, I think she was a chairman teacher that month. I know who you're talking about now. She's actually been here fifty-something. Yeah, I remember that because it was like a hundred and thirty thousand or something like that. But she'd been here for, but I don't remember that. She'd been at Allen. I knew she was here when I was here.
Can't get on? Paul? Okay.
Michael.
No, no, I mean Leon.
Who's Paul, Michael?
It's raining pretty good.
No, because it's wet.
Oh, it's raining wonderfully.
Sorry, Mr. I tried to be late. I'm sorry I'm not late.
Don't come to life here. We won't have any meeting, so. No, I'm good. You know, that thing is running. You want it? Okay, you ready? Everybody wave at it. Call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, into the Republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, just as for all. Hey, thank you all for coming. This evening, Mr. Murizio is excused, Mr. Keegan is excused, Ms. Wilczynski is someplace in the building. Okay. First item on the agenda. Moment of silence, and I have nothing here, Connie. Should I have something here? No, okay. Presentations. DNS class of two thousand eighteen valedictorian and salutatorian, Mr. Leclerc.
Good privilege that I'm here tonight introducing the top two members of the. Jacob would be attending. And our valedictorian for the class two thousand eighteen, Jack Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Leclerc. Congratulations. Next item, North Syracuse Central School District Co-Teachers of the Year. Who's Phil?
Don't worry.
Is that going to be Phil? While we, while Donna Marie tries to get started.
I'm not here.
Phil? Phil, are you doing the Co-Teachers of the Year? No? Who is doing it? Are you doing it? In NSCA? John, anybody?
Okay, I'm not sure where the miscommunication was because normally Mr. Cleary does come and talk about the process for the Teachers of the Year. But this year, my understanding is that there were two candidates. And I would like to call them up. Kathryn Carr, social studies teacher in North Syracuse Junior High. Jill Melius, physical education teacher at Roxborough Road Middle School. And I'm also pleased to tell you that this year, both candidates were so impressive that it was impossible to choose one Teacher of the Year. So I think it's the first time I ever remember we have co-teachers, we have plaques for both. Kathryn Carr, congratulations to you. And Jill Melius, congratulations to you as well. So congratulations. Thank you for all you do to inspire not only the students but the staff. And we look forward to hearing from you on our traditional opening day Superintendent's Conference Day next fall. So congratulations and thank you for being here.
All right. School accountability. Is that working for you, Donna Marie?
It is.
Okay. Put the lights down. Usually kill them. Yeah, yeah.
People can see.
We'll take them down, make it easier.
Oh, hi. I'm Donna Marie. How did I meet you guys? I'm the executive director. Every year I give the school accountability report. Do I need to talk into a microphone or am I okay?
You don't need to talk into the microphone, otherwise the people at home can't hear you.
I can use my teacher voice. Okay. So you have the report in front of you. I'll just go through it and tell you what the little details are and the vocabulary terms that you need to learn as we talk about school accountability. I do want to warn you that, again, the rules are changing. Next year's report will look very different than this year's report. There is a statewide conference that I have to go to in Long Island next week to learn what the new accountability rules are going to be. And I thank Annette for letting me attend that. It was kind of forced upon us a little bit by state ed, but I'm happy to go and figure out how we will end up on the school report card and what categories and new vocabulary terms I have to learn. So the first thing I want to tell you about is this year's report, again, there was some changing scenery on those exams. So we're talking about three through eight testing, the ELA exam, and the high school math exams, Regents exams, and then the graduation accountability report. So those are the pieces of this. On the three through eight tests, the past couple of years, we've seen fewer questions on those exams. They're not timed anymore, so students have as much time as they need in order to complete them. CBT stands for Computer-Based Test. So this year, we had our third and fourth graders take the state tests on computer. Worked well in some ways and didn't work so well in other ways. The ELA system crashed on the second day statewide, so that was a bit of a panic for everyone. But we were able to get all of the students through. Next year, the hope is to put the middle schools, so five, six, and seven, on CBT, and then the year after that, the junior highs, so that all students will be testing by 2020 on CBT, which is what the state is requiring. Thank you, John. So we also have a release of more questions after the exam is over with. That was just today. Now, usually, we've had to wait until the summertime before we can see those exams, those questions, but actually, they released them today. I did send out the information to all of the principals and directors in the district so that we can use those released questions when we do some professional development this summer. This is Questar's second year. You may recall that Pearson was the one that had the contract before. And now we're in the second year of Questar. I believe, as far as I know, that Questar is going to continue as the company that does these tests. And then the questions are created by New York State teachers more and more. Pearson did not have an affinity for doing that. I believe that's probably one of the reasons they lost the contract. Questar does use more teachers to create test questions. In nineteen twenty, the school year, the commissioner has stated that student growth scores will again be used for teacher and principal accountability. We'll see if that makes it into the nineteen twenty school year. So let me explain the graph so that you know what you're looking at. This is a four-year trend graph for our ELA, so it's only third through eighth grade ELA because that's where the tests are. I've broken it down by subgroup and color-coded it, which is why I wanted to use the Almo so that you can see those colors. From thirteen fourteen all the way to sixteen seventeen. I'll describe the categories. They stay the same for all of the graphs. So the all-student category is everybody. AA is African-American students. Hispanic, Asian, white, multiracial students. SWD stands for Students with Disabilities. And then economically disadvantaged would be students that qualify for free or reduced lunch. And as you can see by the ELA trends, this is like one of those nice times to be the data person because in almost every subgroup, we have increased our student performance. The only subgroup to go down was the Asian students. Well, I mean, I have a graph of that, and I actually brought it because that's been asked a couple of years in a row. It changes based on subgroup. It is not a straight number all the way across. Used to be. A few years ago, they changed it, and it's based on the performance of subgroups statewide. So honestly, the ones that have the highest target to meet are the Asian students. Because typically, over history and a couple of years, they have performed better than the other subgroups. So they set the bar based on historical performance. Did that help?
I think so, relatively. How are we?
We're okay. Yeah, we're doing okay. We're showing growth, and that's what they're looking for. We're doing okay, in most areas. Here's math. And the note I wrote to myself is that, you know, stays the same. So when you look at it, there hasn't been much change in the math. Little ups and downs, nothing significant. Here's the science results. This is only fourth and eighth grade that take the science exams. And it does not include the students that are accelerated because you ask me that question every year. I'll just preempt it and tell you ahead of time. So we do accelerate students in eighth grade science, and we do accelerate them in eighth grade math. This chart does not include those students. Yes?
Why'd you put those on the same? They're all lumped together, I'm assuming, when I'm looking at that.
Yes. Fourth and eighth grade?
Yeah.
Why did I put them on the same graph?
I mean, why don't I see four and then see?
It's the same for, this is three through eight math, so I just lumped them all together for accountability. Yes.
There are two different tests there, just like there's a whole, I guess I'm not making myself clear.
Yes, there are two different tests, one in fourth grade, one in eighth grade. But on this, there are third grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade tests. And they lump them all together for your accountability purposes for the district.
They do that for science also.
And they do it for science also. They don't split it out. Is that different than what you remember, Paul?
No, no, I didn't, didn't realize they did that.
Yeah, they do.
I don't like that.
No.
Doesn't matter what I like or not.
No, I don't like a lot of it either, Paul. No, they didn't. Onto secondary ELA. So this is really only the English Regents up at the high school. And you can see, some of the subcategories aren't here because you need at least thirty students in a graduating class in order to have that subgroup. So you're going to see, you know, the all-student category, the white, students with disabilities, and then the economically disadvantaged. Okay? Also pretty stagnant, but the Regents has not changed significantly. You know, we went to Common Core, and we've had that for a couple of years. These are the four-year math. Trends, this is usually the algebra Regents. They will take the highest score between algebra, geometry, and trigonometry. But let's be honest, algebra is usually, you know, the easier test for students to score on, so that's the one that they normally use. I will point out that the students with disability scores are a little volatile here. You can see that they've gone up and down and all over the place. I believe this is because the population is pretty small. So if you have thirty students in a cohort, and that's the minimum, and some years, we've had just thirty students in a cohort. One or two kids scoring, passing or not passing, will really change your data. Where in the all-student category, you know, you're talking seven hundred kids. So this is graduation rate. The state graduation rate target is eighty percent. We are way above that, which is nice. It's a pleasant place to be. And you can see, you know, most of the categories remain about the same. Again, with the students with disabilities, you see some volatility. You might be wondering about the African-American subgroup because you only see two years' worth of data. It's because we had less than thirty kids in that particular subgroup graduating. And if you have less than thirty kids, they won't give you an accountability number. The reason they do that is because they think that you can identify who those students would be. I don't know if it's true or not, but that's what they think. Let's talk a little bit about local assistance plan. If you are old school, you might remember CINNI was a category that we used, which was a school in need of improvement. That went away a couple of years ago, and state ed created these new subgroups called focus schools, local assistance plans. Local assistance plan is the first step in accountability, you know, when you're not scoring well. And then it gets harder after that, you know, more severe. We have one building that is on a LAP plan, and that would be Roxborough Middle School. And it was performance five through seven ELA on the New York State test, and it was the white student subgroup from a couple of years ago. So several years in a row, the white student subgroup was not performing to the target that state ed had set. I just want to point out that that is one of three LAP buildings in our BOCs, not including Syracuse City, where honestly, most of the buildings are on plans. The other two districts are ESM and Salve that have schools that are on LAP plans. So I talked to Dave, who I think is still here. Yay, Dave, and Shelley, this week, to find out, you know, what the LAP plan entailed. I think you'll get more information from them in a future board meeting. But I hate to give you bad news without telling you the good stuff that schools are doing. So what Shelley was able to tell me is there's a new data team at work. Ri and Mi are two computer programs that we're using to monitor kids' progress, reading inventory, math inventory. They're also studying the effects of the high poverty rate. They have a fifty-four percent poverty rate at that building. And Roxell, which feeds into Rox Middle, has almost a seventy percent poverty rate. They're using response to intervention, WIN, which is a, help me out, what I need now, thank you, intervention period. They're piloting another program called Read 180, System 44 for students with disabilities, and lots of other good things that they were going on and on. But this is what I could fit on this slide, okay? Okay, I got the thumbs up from Dave. And then the last slide I want to show you is the good news because of all the good work that Rox Middle is doing. So these are the ELA white students. This is the reason that they ended up on the plan. And you can see that these three years were what got us on the plan, and these three years, with that kind of focus, we've seen an increase in student achievement. So it's good news. Any questions? Sure. That's good. That's good.
I just want to, I just want to comment. Thank you for sharing that because we've heard that from a variety of sources, including from the NSCA. I hope it's true. However, we have not, the superintendents and BOCs, we have not received anything from the commissioner stating that in writing, so we anxiously await that.
And it does have its pros and cons. You know, the reports from the principals this year were that kids liked it because it was new and kind of cool in some ways. It was frustrating for other students. Math can be exceedingly difficult because the math tools, like a protractor, are really difficult to use on the computer. And then when the whole system crashed and BOCs went down on day two, well, yeah, that was a bad scene. But, you know, everybody rallied, and we got through it. Yeah, it's difficult. Yeah, the protractors especially, when they first came out with them and they were showing us in training, the protractor would just spin. You know, and if I was a third grader, holy moly, what would I do, you know, with something like that, so. Okay, we're good? Great, great, thank you.
Thank you, Donna Marie.
Sure, thank.
Comments from the audience? We have three people signed up, all wishing to address the pool issue. Brad Ranieri is first.
Everybody.
Brad, you know the three minutes. Connie's got the timer, so.
Okay, I've timed it out, so hopefully we're good. Good evening, everybody. My name is Brad Ranieri, and I have been a district resident for the past twenty-five years. I have two daughters, one who attends Lakeshore Elementary and the other who attends Gillette. I'm also a science teacher in the district and have been the head varsity girls swim coach for the past twenty-four seasons. Last week, you heard the pool committee's recommendation. How the board acts on this recommendation is crucial with long-lasting implications. A pool, if constructed, will be here for generations and generations to come, well over a hundred years, I'm sure. Please know that our swim teams account for a very small percentage that would derive benefit from this facility. Tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of students in this district have graduated having never been exposed to lifesaving, lifelong aquatic skills, especially our most vulnerable populations whose families do not have the means to provide swimming lessons for their children. Please consider having lifelong enjoyment and appreciation of the water versus a lifelong fear of the water. We do not have to look too far to see the benefits of this in action, where every student in the Liverpool, West Genesee, and Baldenville District have the opportunity to acquire these lifelong lifesaving skills. Although we cannot say for sure that a pool will save a life, there's a high degree of certainty that by providing these skills, we will save someone's child. In nineteen sixty-six, North Syracuse proposed building not one pool, but two new pools in the district. One at the to-be-constructed Cicero High School and one at North Syracuse High School. The proposal was to create equity among the two high schools. The nineteen sixty-six Board of Education was trying to be fair. The pools were just votes from passing. It is frustrating that in the spirit of fairness, by proposing two pools, we ended up with no pool. This board is fair. Let last week not be the end of this process. It has been almost thirty years since a pool vote. In fairness, let the end be a democratic process where the community can decide by means of a public referendum on the pool. Please, if you have any questions regarding pools or operations, or any information, or about any information in the study, please feel free to ask myself or Paul Gill. We are here to help. I want to thank the Board of Education. I want to thank you all for providing us this process. for providing us this process over the last several months. I want to thank Dr. Silke for his leadership in leading the committee, and of course, Don and Annette, the only administration in my tenure who have allowed an open and transparent study of this issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brad. Jean Vanette?
Hi, good evening. I too would like to thank the board for taking the time to address this issue about the pool. I've lived in the district my entire life. I graduated from CNS High School. My father was an administrator in the North Syracuse Central School District for 37 years, working and administrating a couple different of the schools here. My mother was a big advocate in trying to get that pool built when Cicero High School was built back in, you know, being built in 1966. Both of my children are swimmers. They've been in the pool since they were eight years old. They've been swimming competitively. Right now, they swim in the Liverpool Jets. My daughter swims on the varsity team. My son swims on the modified team. And there are lots of...everything that Brad just said, I'm not going to repeat because you guys already know that. And a couple of things that you don't know is there are many community members in North Syracuse that think we have a pool because our district is so large. And so when they talk to me about it, they're surprised when I say we don't have a pool. And I think that speaks volumes. And I think it's very important that it does go up for referendum and these people are informed of what we have and what our need is. Also, I was...I teach up at the high school. I've been there 24 years. And I was in the hall the other day after school, and these two boys walked by, and I happened to overhear them talking about lifeguarding, which we're in a shortage of right now. And one boy says, "I really want a lifeguard." And the other kid's like, "Well, you can't lifeguard. You're not certified." "I know. I want to get certified." He's like, "I guess if we had a pool, I could get certified." And I just happened to turn around, and I was taken by surprise because students in the hallways up at the high school want a pool. They're asking for it. They're talking about it among themselves. And they don't know who I am. They just were passing by. So I thought that that's something that you guys should consider, you know, in your decisions as to how to move forward with this. And I thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Richard Carroll?
I'm Richard Carroll. My daughter Caitlin and Kaylee and son Richard have been in the school district all their lives. Just want to talk a little bit about the benefits to CNS for a pool. There's obviously a lot of things that have been put in front of you about the cost to this pool and stuff like this. But as the last lady spoke, I've also had my daughter Caitlin in Liverpool Jets since she was six years old. Okay? The benefits that we're losing out on to offset some of the costs is that school-age program to teach our kids to swim through club sports and stuff like that. We've approximately paid probably $800 a year since she's been in this. She's been in it for seven years. She's very competitive in it. And that's the stuff that leads our kids into modified sports and training. I feel it's an injustice that we have to travel to another district and pay another district. Not only the fee that you're paying, the money you're spending in transporting your kids over there, the money you spend in their district, probably grabbing a bite to eat or whatever, which all could be tax dollars that come back to Cicero. The second point, with talking about competitions and stuff like that, the last meeting talked about being able to hold sectionals and stuff like that. I think we really need to look into what sectionals bring into the district. It seemed a little bit unclear to what we do benefit from it, but there are dollars, and Brad has some facts that if we ask later on, you can get those facts about what that sectional, having a sectional event here means for our community, not only for the schools, but then the businesses in and around that support this community. She talked...she mentioned lifeguarding, and I don't want to jump over what she said. I trained my...we paid to train our daughter Kaylee through Lemoine to get a certification because it wasn't available in Cicero. Okay? She then came back and lifeguarded for Mr. Ranieri and those guys during swimming events while she was in school and then even after she was out of college. So there's definitely a benefit for that. We've seen years where Cicero, the beach on Lakeshore Road hasn't been open because there's no lifeguards, no things like that. If we can train and forget about the life-saving metrics, but if we can open that enjoyment to the rest of the community because we have people to serve those jobs, it would be a benefit to CNS School District as well. I think that's actually all I had.
Thank you, Richard.
All right.
Next item on the agenda is 4A Board Committee Reports/Comments. Mr. Leon?
I participated on Saturday at the MOST Rocket Build 'Em Challenge. It was really exciting. I ended up being a runner, so I got to chase after the rocket with the kids. And there were several students from the CNS School District either participating on teams or independently on other teams. And it was just fun to watch them. They were all super excited. I ran with a couple of those kids to get their rocket. It was just fun and to see the excitement on these kids' faces. Had answered questions about rockets, center of gravity. Really neat. They had to do a lot of work.
Good. Thanks for going. Mr. Vivaldi, anything legislative? Nothing on policy, Mary? There it is. Anything over here? Okay, this Saturday at noon starts the Relay for Life over here at the junior high. I will be there. I'm not sure if any other board members will make it. We have the Survivor Lap, I think, at 12:30, and then events throughout the day, and then the Luminarya event, I believe, is 10 o'clock. That's what this...9:45. So if any of you can just come over and support the event, any and all donations will be accepted. It all goes locally to the American Cancer Society. Just a tremendous event, a lot of fun, a lot of activity. And of course, I don't think anybody here has not been touched by cancer in some way, so... We'd appreciate any support you can give us. The Board of Ed team wants to put the NSCA team to shame, so anything you can do to help us out, we'd appreciate, so... Superintendent's comments?
I have a couple of things. First of all, I want to piggyback on what Mike Leon just shared in terms of the Rocket competition in the MOST. And once again, I would like to thank Mike Leon for helping us to secure the grant for Lockheed Martin that helped make all this possible in the competitions at the MOST and the STEM after-school programs possible for our students. So thanks, Mike. CNS Softball, I'm very excited to tell you that they are the sectional champs, so congratulations to them. I don't know if you are aware of something called the Seal of Biliteracy. We did put something in the Friday Letter last week for the board, but I just wanted to mention, this is something fairly new, and it's for our high school students. We have six, only six, but it's quite an accomplishment, students that will be graduating this year with a special seal of biliteracy. That means that they have demonstrated the ability to be able to completely speak a second language as well as they can master the English language. And I would like to read their names. Taylor Jacobs for Spanish, Natalie Ackerman for Spanish, Taylor Durantini for Spanish, Kelly Strong French, Julia Port French, Kirsten Moser for German, and Sydney Fina for Spanish. An absolute huge, huge accomplishment. And they had to go through many rigorous steps to achieve that, so congratulations to them. So I mentioned quite often that when we hear any news related to our state aid penalty, that I would be sharing this publicly at our board meetings, and I have a couple of things to report. On a not-so-good note, we finally, last week, I have a letter in my hand dated June 1st that came via email from the State Education Department quite late on Friday, June 1st, indicating that they are expecting our first payment to be made at the end. That's the official word that we believe we are going to have to make the first payment. On a more positive note, and I'm not sure where this is going to go, we have been in contact with our senators and our assembly people, and I understand that there's varying things happening right now in both the Senate and the Assembly as we hope to have some bills moved forward. The legislative session ends within the next couple of weeks, but we have not yet given up hope for this to be further addressed before the session ends. And we will continue to work with them and certainly let people know if we're successful with that endeavor. So I think that's...
Thank you, Annette. Routine Action Items, 5A, consideration of approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Education of May 21 and the special meeting of the Board of Education on May 29. B, consideration of the classification and school placement of disabled students certified by the District Committee on Special Education. C, consideration of classification and placement of preschool disabled students certified by the District Committee on Preschool Special Education, and consideration of a contract award for inter-scholastic supplies. There's actually multiple vendors on this, as shown on the agenda, from BSN and Laux and Medco and Riddell, Scholastic Sports and MF. So the motion is to award in those various amounts. So I'll entertain a motion to approve 5A, B, C, D as a group. Mr. Leon, second, Ms. McDonald, all in favor? Passed. Discussion and Action Items. Establishment of the Annual Organizational Meeting of the North Syracuse Central School District. And that motion would be to establish Monday, July 9, 2018 as the annual organizational meeting. B is the acknowledgement of the 2018-19 textbook list. There's a list there on the agenda. C, the OCMBOCs Adult and Continuing Education, equivalence of attendance program, equivalence of attendance contact persons, employment preparation education, the authorized signatories, and annual cooperative bidding resolution notification agreements. Those are all the various motions we need to continue with OCMBOCs for those programs. And D, resolution to enter into up to a 48-month service contract with OCMBOCs Board of Education, OCMBOCs for replacement of print shop equipment, which is their print shop, but we enter into the agreement and they put the equipment in there for us. So I'll take a motion for 6A, B, C, and D as a group first. Mr. Leon and Ms. Scanlon, second, all in favor? 6E is the Vehicle Bond Resolution. Rather lengthy resolution, but it says that now that the voters have approved the purchase of buses, that the district will now go and enter into the financing for those. And F, the Revenue Anticipation Resolution. That's for cash flow purposes, and it authorized the issuances of up to $20 million to handle the cash. Typically, a school district doesn't get much cash. It doesn't have any cash over the summer. We wait for tax revenue in the fall, and then state aid kicks in after that. So this will tide the district over for those two. I'll take a motion for 6E and F as a group. Mr. Harrington, Mr. DiNofrio, all in favor. One abstention, Connie. That would be me on those two. G, discussion of report from the Pool Study Committee and resolution to obtain proposals from King &amp; King Architects and Watchdog Building Partners. I asked Connie to put this on. We had the special meeting last week. We received a report from Bill Silke. We've had some speakers this evening. The next step in the process, if we're going to continue the process, is to get proposals from King &amp; King Architects and the construction manager, Watchdog Building Partners, as to what their services would cost to develop the detailed cost estimates that we would need to make any future decisions. So all this does is authorize Annette to contact them, get a proposal from each within the next two weeks as to what it will cost for them to take whatever timeframe it is, which is probably going to be months, to develop the detailed cost for both a six-lane and eight-lane pool at the high school. This obligates us to nothing because we may see their proposals and say, "Oh, my goodness." Or we can see their proposals and say, "Okay, I'll go ahead." That's a discussion for two weeks from now. But tonight is just the, can we let Annette, or do we agree to let Annette, go ahead and seek those proposals? Because without a detailed cost estimate, we're nowhere. So is there any comments, discussion, Aaron? The others?
Question of...
Sure.
So I just was looking at the resolution.
Yeah.
Passing a resolution that says we'll take action.
Well, again, this is just proposals. All we'll get from King &amp; King is probably a simple one- or two-page agreement that'll say, "This is our fee to spend whatever time it's going to take to get a detailed proposal," because they have to go to engineer for it.
Right. The wording says, "For board consideration and action" at the June 18.
Yeah, hopefully we'll get the proposals back so they're two weeks from tonight.
Kind of action will we...
Yeah, two weeks from tonight, if we agree to the dollar values in the proposals for their fees, two weeks from tonight, we would enter into agreement with King &amp; King and Watchdog.
It's not...my understanding, let me clarify. My understanding is that in two weeks, we'd be coming back to you with a document that says, "This is what it's going to cost us to do the work to figure out what the pool would cost."
Right. I guess I'm reading this as it's also, I'm passing a resolution saying that I'm going to take some kind of action on the 18th.
Yeah, we could reject them on the 18th.
On the 18th, my understanding is the way that the proposal's worded, on the 18th, when you see what this proposal comes in at, you're going to have a discussion, and you're either going to say, "Yes, let's spend the money to find out exactly what this will cost so that in the future, when we get that information, we can determine whether..." Well, not me, the board can determine whether to put it up for a vote or not based on that information. But the only thing you're going to take action on in the next two weeks is authorizing them to go ahead and do that work for you.
Their fee to develop the cost estimates.
I get it. I know I'm making this very complicated. So it's going to be a simple statement of a fee. It's not going to be a 67-page report.
No, it should be like a two-page agreement.
I just want to, you know, be assured I see it soon enough before the meeting.
No, that's what...we'll get those back, and Connie can get them in for us.
I have a question. Are we certain that they'll be able to do this within a 2018 frame?
We're sure of nothing, but you're going to tell them tomorrow we want it for the 18th. It won't take them long to take...
I just want to make sure that that's realistic and that we're not passing a proposal that we're going to come back and say...
Yeah.
Okay.
Beat up on them.
I will.
Okay. So is there a motion to continue then to take the next step for the pool study? Aaron, Hall, all in favor? Okay. H, surplus of marketable equipment through, again, through the online auctions at Auctions International. Amendment to resolution to approve the teacher lead evaluators. Annette?
So I need to mention this, and I'm really rather embarrassed because it's not the first time that we've had to put on a correction. Every year, you pass a resolution that says, "We have completed all the training for the folks who evaluate teachers and principals according to the APPR plan." And you did pass the resolution. However, Connie called me, and we realized when she was putting the minutes together that the resolution, even though we changed all the names and everything, had last year's school year in it. And I want to be completely clear, in case the State Education Department ever asks for this information, that we are accurate. It is for this year. So I ask that you please repass that with a correct date.
J is acknowledgement of gift, and I've got a message that says connection to the server is lost. The North Syracuse Central School District was one of six winners of the AARP Create the Good Dream Builders Contest. North Syracuse Junior High School student Emma Warner's video nomination highlighting a clear and compelling case for the need to support speech therapy programs at Cicero Elementary School. The district received a check for $1,250 from the AARP to go towards speech equipment at Cicero Elementary. I'll take a motion to approve H, I, and J as a group. Mr. Harrington, Ms. Scanlon, all in favor? And acknowledgement of retirements. John Prezuto, teaching assistant, 34 years of service. George Snyder, Spanish teacher, with 30 years of service. And we wish them both a long and happy... and happy and healthy retirement. Personnel, 7A, instructional staff, B, support staff. Motion to take, is there any need for discussion on 7A? I'll entertain a motion for 7A and B as a group. Mr. Leon, Mr. Donofrio, all in favor? Motion for Executive Session. Motion to move into executive session for the purpose of receiving an update on two legal matters relative to potential litigation, and for the purpose of reviewing the employment history of five individuals with no action to follow. Motion for Executive Session. Mr. Leon, Ms. Scanlon, all in favor? Executive Session looks like 7:48. Thank you.
Got to sign papers.
Oh, yes, students, come forward. Everybody needs a paper signed. Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome.
This goes to Connie, this goes to Connie, that goes to Connie.